So three, let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017. Let me offer everyone the reminder, if you're going to address the board, to sign in on the clipboard that's on the table in front of me and make sure the microphone's turned on, you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Our next meeting after tonight for the planning board will be October 17th at 7:00 PM in this room, the Matthew Thornton Room. Let me appoint Nelson to a voting position in for Mike. Let me also acknowledge that Paul is now a full member and requires no appointment as an alternate into a full position. So congratulations on that appointment and welcome and thank you for that. And with that, we're a board of seven tonight. That brings us to the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Tim, what have you?
First item I have is the regional impact determination for the SRS Petroleum Services Site Plan that's later on the agenda tonight. Staff recommends that the board determine it is not of regional impact as it does not meet the criteria.
What's the will of the board with respect to the staff's recommendation?
I'll so move.
Is there a second? Second by Alistair. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to uphold the staff's recommendation that it's not of regional impact. Anything else, Tim?
The second thing I have is, at the October 17th meeting, one of the agenda items planned is the review of the traffic for the potential apartment project on Executive Park Drive. I do have down in my office hard copies of the 630-page traffic study for those who are interested in a hard copy. If you'd like one after the meeting, let me know. I'll run downstairs, you can come down, I'll hand you a hard copy tonight. Otherwise, it is posted, if you go to the Planning Board webpage on the town website in the upper right-hand corner under News and Announcements, there is an electronic version available as well.
Okay. So the only thing that I would add to that is everyone make a choice whether you want it electronically or go down to the office and don't make Tim put those in the mail for you in your package. Lynn, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I want to commend Tim for putting that on the website because I know a lot of people in town are interested in it and you took a little bit of a beating, but at least it's out there and people can see it.
Sure.
They can read it, they can say, or they can't say, "I didn't know" because it's out there. So, thank you for putting it out there.
Other comments or questions? Tim, is there anything else on the Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report?
No, other than I believe you wanted to move the discussion on the extension for Skip's Marine to this point in the night.
Yeah, I will. I just want to just make sure the staff, the board doesn't have any questions for you as a staff. Seeing none, that ends item two on the agenda and then with that, I want to rearrange our agenda to include an item that's listed under the discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern related to Skip's Marine because he's got-
Mr. Chairman, that that one is also being postponed in case anybody's interested.
We'll address that when it comes up in the-
All right, okay.
So, the reason is that Skip informs me he's got a sick child and I just want to get him home and get him back to his daughter as quickly as possible. So with that, what we have in our package under items of concern is a request for an extension of time to meet the conditions of approval for Skip's Marine. And Tim, do you want to introduce that and tell us what's up with that?
Sure. You've got a memo actually from Robert Price addressed to the board covering the staff recommendation on the extension and then following that is some additional information, the letter, request from Skip, more from Skip's Marine to request extension. Essentially, there's two things. He's 99% there. The two items that are left are really out of his control and he's coming up on the six-month deadline. So, staff is supportive of a six-month extension if the board is comfortable with that. The first one is condition regarding the updated NHDOT driveway permit. It's in process. We expect it'll happen in the next couple of weeks, but it would likely happen after this expires, so we want to make sure that's covered. And then lastly is condition 10. During the hearing process, the board requested that some cross easements for access be removed from the property as part of the conditions of approval. In doing our research on that, as well as Skip's attorney, it's discovered that those easements were actually given to the town of Merrimack with the requirement that the reciprocal easements from the abutting property owners be obtained in order to actually affect the change that was required by those easements. The town recorded their part, but the abutters have never recorded theirs. So, the question that we have and our recommendation is that the board consider that not removing those because otherwise, we need to bring this to the town council for a vote to extinguish them and go through the process that way, whereas right now, because the abutters have never recorded their reciprocal easements, the easements that are on the property today literally have no effect whatsoever on the property.
Okay. So, Tim, my understanding of that explanation is we should address waiving this condition about the-
Correct.
About the easements-
Removing easements.
And then decide the six-month extension.
Correct.
Okay. Does the board have any discussion or understanding of what the request is with respect to the easement problem? If there's none, what's the will of the board? Respect that. Tom?
First. So waiving this easement problem just kicks the can down the road or?
Kind of, but it doesn't really do anything in the first place.
What I would say is that by leaving them in place, if for some reason we end up seeing redevelopment of these properties in the future, we have an opportunity to create that cross access between properties because it's in the towns, it's basically granted to the town and I think there's some advantage to leaving that as opposed to extinguishing it in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alistair?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we waive the condition, the 10, that is the, if you like, it got itself in and we don't see it nearly to be there and enforced at this time.
Is there a second? Second by Lynn Christensen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to waive the condition 10 from our previous decision.
And can I then suggest we make the second motion to grant a six-months extension?
Is there a second for Alistair? Second by Lynn Christensen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to grant that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to pick up any other discussion and possible other action, action regarding other items of concern, but that takes care of Skip and you're all set. So-
Thank you very, very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay. That brings us, that brings us to item three on our agenda. Before I read that one into the record, at our vice chair's suggestion, I do want to acknowledge that the, item four, which is the La Salka and Land of Goshen subdivision, that the applicant intends to request and have the board consider a continuance on that one. So if anybody from the public is here to talk about that one, decide to stay if you want to, but there won't be any substance, there won't likely be any substantive discussion unless for some reason the board decides not to grant that continuance, which would be unusual. Yes, November 7th would be the time that that would come back. So if you're here for that one.
And just for reasoning, if anybody is here for that, the applicant was directed at the last planning board meeting to obtain a variance from the zoning board. The zoning board did not have a full five-member board available that night. The applicant, as is his legal option, opted to move forward and continue that application. So, that won't be heard by the zoning board until the end of October. Therefore, November 7th makes sense so that we can get that taken for our first.
Okay. So with that explanation, back to item three on our agenda, which is My Box New England LLC is the applicant and TW Bridge Associates LLC is the owner. This is a continued review for consideration of final approval for conditional use permit and site plan for the construction of a 39,100-square-foot self-storage facility with associated site improvements. The parcel's located at 101 Herrick Street in the C2 General Commercial and I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 3D2 Lot 20. This item was continued from our September 5th, 2017, planning board meeting. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, this was continued from the September 5th meeting. As I understand it from chatting with Robert, really the lone issue of concern that the board had after granting the conditional use permit was the architectural design of the building as it relates to the requirements of Section 1204-2B of the regulations. So there have not been any new site plan updated submissions to the office since that September 7th, 5th meeting. We do have updated architectural rendings, which I believe the applicant will be discussing here tonight. So the, basically the bulk of our staff recommendations remain identical as they were on September 5th, assuming that you're comfortable with the building. We still do have made the determination that it requires the waiver from Section 1204-2B for the length of uninterrupted facade, so that's something the board would maybe consider moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for that, Tim. Chad, please introduce yourself and-
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. With me tonight is Brad Weiger, who's the architect for the project, and also Edward Smith, who's the owner of My Box. We're here tonight again to discuss our plans to proceed with the development of the subject property into My Box New England's headquarters. As you may recall, at the September 5th meeting, there was a pretty lengthy discussion relative to the architectural design and the regulations. We had some questions regarding the applicability of the regulations and what section that may be. We did take into consideration some of the feedback that we received at the meeting. I believe at least one of the board members actually recommended maybe doing a tower or a glass facade on the other side of the building and that is the major modification to the plans that we have before you this evening. So, what that results in is we basically have a 40-foot glass tower on each side of the building. So the, the net facade that would be, uninterrupted facade would be the 100, it would actually be 150 feet between the two glass towers, if you will. We did prepare a waiver request that I'd be happy to submit this evening. As we discussed at the meeting on September 5th, the projections or jogs that are outlined in the regulations really are not conducive to the use that we're proposing on this site. We're proposing to store approximately 500 My Box units inside this building, so it's important that we don't have those jogs. And I know the board seemed to be comfortable with that particular waiver as long as we could address some architectural elements with the, you know, the facade, at least at the September 5th meeting. That's the feedback that I, that we received. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to have the architect address any of the questions that the board may have at this time or maybe just have him explain the modifications that we made.
So Chad, do you have a waiver request in writing that you want to pass out?
I do, yes.
Because go ahead and do that and then speak to your waiver request and I think the board can kind of go through all of that at once.
Okay.
Who'll pass it around and go through it, but talk us through it once you have it.
Yeah, so I'll hand out all my copies. I choose as much as I know what it states. So essentially, Section 12.04-2B in the subdivision regulations deals with the building design, in particular, the building facade design requirements. And it outlines in that section that projects, even though this project isn't technically in the industrial zone along Daniel Webster Highway, we do have frontage on Daniel Webster Highway, so I believe this is the, this section that is applicable. But it essentially states that you shall not have an uninterrupted facade of more than 200 feet. We believe we've made some modifications to address that particular criteria, but there is also a section or part of that section which states that a portion of the facade shall jog in and that's a, it's a mathematical calculation based on the length of the facade and the width of the building. We discussed those dimensions at the last meeting and I had explained that this use, again, really isn't conducive to that type of a design and it would severely impact the viability of this site for, you know, the location of My Box New England's headquarters. So that's the hardship for the waiver. It really impacts the viability and feasibility of this site. You may recall, we did receive a variance for an encroachment into the front setback to account, to address some of the topography issues of the site and any kind of manipulation of the facade by virtue of jogging or stepping the building would really interfere with the internal configuration and the ability for us to store the My Box units or my client to store the My Box units. So, that's, that's really a summary of what the waiver request is. We do outline the modifications to the architectural plan in that waiver and again, essentially situating a, you know, a tower on both sides of the building, which would create symmetry and I think addresses, and if I do recall correctly, that was actually mentioned as a potential solution at the last meeting as well.
I remember that as well. I think I was the one that offered it up.
You were.
It, it still does require the waiver because of the length, but I think that you've done what you can to accommodate what your intended use is in, in consideration of what the property has got on it. But what's the will of the board? Is there questions for the applicant about his request for a waiver? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the improved architectural design that we have been presented this evening justifies giving a waiver on the ground that strict conformity would propose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the waiver is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Desiree has a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Tom.
Sorry. I just wanted to ask the architect, maybe, the space between the towers looks like it's just a straight-edged roof.
Yes, it is.
Is that a parapet or something sticking up there so that there's AC behind it or?
It's not much of a-
Let me get, you gotta get that handheld microphone if you're gonna stand up and go for a walk.
Right.
Take the one off the table too, whatever you want.
Thanks.
The parapet is not much of a parapet. It's probably about 18 inches. The reason being, we've got to it with a 35-foot roof height, parapet height, so that the, the My Box people can, they want to store their My Boxes three high and then we've got some space for maneuvering the top of this forklift and then we've got some law, very long span roof trusses, so we've got that space devoted to structure itself. So, the building comes out to 35 feet and yes, that's a straight shot 35 feet across.
Is there, I mean, so on the towers, you have the rooftops and whatnot, which look kind of nice and if you look at Shaw's and a couple other places, when they go straight edges, they put a slanted parapet or something on there to make it look a little bit more pleasant as far as-
Well, we're still trying to maintain sort of an industrial look to the building, trying to maintain a crispness to it as opposed to schmaltz, let's say.
To what?
Schmaltz.
That's a technical term.
I need some help with that. I've come from the south, so.
Trying to, trying to maintain a crisp, industrial look while adhering to some architectural interest on the front.
Okay. I guess, I thought a whole lot of our discussion was trying to soften the industrial look and-
Well, I think we've done that quite a lot.
You did some. You did some. I can't argue with that. I just would have preferred seeing a little bit more softening, if you will, in there because you don't have industrial neighbors. You have commercial neighbors and they don't have sharp, crisp, storage buildings looks about them. And so I'm just trying to understand what you mean by wanting to keep an industrial look.
Well, it's, it's an industrial building.
Well, but it's, it's by itself. It's in the middle of our town. I mean, if it was off on the edge of town in the industrial areas, that would be a lot more comfortable.
Well, I think, if I may just intervene, I mean, the property is very unique in that it, no.
I did it again.
The property is unique in that it is divided in its own, so we have commercial and industrial zone on this property.
That's right, but I'm only talking about the commercial part of it.
Well, but I think if we look at the surroundings, I mean, you have Merrimack Building Supply across the road. That's a pretty industrial building. It doesn't really have much of a commercial use on site, you know, they, I guess all I'm trying to say is that it's a, it's a mixed use. There's no really set architectural standards in the neighborhood. I think that the, that if you look at that strip, there's, there is industrial components and, you know, I, when I looked at this building, one of the elements that I could see is, I can see like a branding theme where this is My Box New England's headquarters. I think the, the building facade is going to be white, which is the color of the My Box and the, the units are very clean and crisp, which is, which is, in my opinion, when I, when I look at those against a lot of their competitor units is, is one of their benefits. It's, it's one of the things that people look, look at because it's a very structurally sound unit. And so I think the building itself is really trying to be a mirror image of what the product is. So that's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's really what the, the design intent is here. So it is unique. We think the product's unique and we, you know, we do want to stand out in town.
Okay. You had talked last time about some landscaping along DW Highway. Is that expanded upon at all or explained a bit to try and help break up that a little bit for the poor person driving by?
Well, we do have a landscaping plan that we submitted with the package and I think what we talked about at the last meeting was, was simply, you know, speaking to the points of the landscaping elements and how those will break up that facade along the highway. We have an added additional landscaping. I think we have, you know, quite a bit of landscaping along that section. So it was my feeling that we, we actually had addressed that. I didn't come away from the last meeting thinking we were going to do additional landscaping. I thought it was more of, yes, the landscaping will be here, that will certainly break up the presentation from the road, but we're supposed to focus on some of the architectural elements for this evening's meeting. So I'm sorry if I misunderstood.
No, I wasn't trying to get you to focus on that. I just had thought this was going to change a little more than, than it did.
Okay.
And so I'm reaching for whatever I can get and understand where we're at.
There is the landscaping from last time.
Yep. Desiree, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah. If you're doing two towers, you probably, like I said the last time with your landscaping, you should split it so you can get to experience the tower. So if you're going to have another tower, pay attention to the landscaping on that. Some requirement, just a suggestion.
We will certainly revisit that and you bring up an excellent point. We will need to modify the landscaping probably in this section here. You know, one of the things that this plan presents is symmetry, so we'll probably try to, you know, match that with the landscaping and the layout. So we, we will certainly revisit that.
I think, so the, the board has before right now some consideration of the waiver of the architectural standards and something that relates to the appearance, which I think is addressed separately or will be addressed by the board separately, is if you have mechanicals that you plan to have on the ceiling like air conditioners and things like that, those are going to be expected to be, either be obscured by the towers or somehow screened up on the roof so that they're not visible from below. And that really isn't necessarily an element of this waiver, but I just wanted to mention that for both your consideration and for the board's that as we get to final approval, that's something that I'd like to see is, you know, if it's not already part of the plan and the conditions, that it become part of that.
Hi, everybody. My name is Edward Smith. I'm the owner of My Box New England. I apologize, I wasn't at the first meeting that we had. I was 45, trying to be 25, and I ripped my hamstring, so, but I'm good now, I'm back. I'd just like to explain the design a little bit to everybody and what we're trying to do. The reason why we're trying to do it a crisp design like this, and that was, you did really good, you actually, is that we want to kind of try to mimic the boxes themselves and what we're doing. This facility is our show model, our showroom of what we can do with this product. Bringing My Box New England to Merrimack is going to have people flying in all from the country, different parts of the country, to come here to see what we do, to see if they want to be involved in My Box and to grow the dealership network. So, I've done probably about 10 projects throughout New Hampshire. I'm very, very much a type A personality. If you drive by any of my self-storage facilities or anything that you see that I'm building, you'll see that the landscaping is done to the T. You'll see that the buildings are always clean, the parking lots are always clean. It's very important when you're storing people's things that they feel safe, secure, well-lit and clean. One example was our building on 111 Northeastern Boulevard in Nashua. I actually had city officials calling me and writing me letters saying, "Thank you so much for changing what that building looked like and for repainting it and for redoing landscaping and everything else." Right now, we're also doing it on Continental Boulevard. We have a facility over there. We've just started. Our landscaping is very new and young, so the trees are little, but we went out and we redid the lawns, irrigation, planted flowers. We're repainting the whole building next, so it'll all be uniform. So, I can assure you that my name is going to be on this project and I grew up in this town and I want to make sure when people drive by this building that they know that this is a stand, stand-up project. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation and the presentation. I, I don't, at least from my part, I didn't mean to suggest that you would do anything less than have the utmost professional standards for your business and run it. I think what we have to manage as the board is the confluence of the design that you've created as a part of your trade dress with how it fits in with what we're doing as a planning board and advancing that. And, you know, I, I think that adding the second tower, since it was something that was discussed last time, you did what I had in mind to sort of solve that. If there's more discussion from other board members or anyone that doesn't agree or doesn't agree completely, you know, let's continue to talk about that. But from our standpoint, it isn't simply a matter of saying, you know, "My business model says that I want to do this kind of a thing and so that's why I did it that way." You still have to kind of get us to fit it into what we're trying to do town-wide.
And actually, in a practicality purpose, so I'll have fork trucks working inside there. And having a straight-edged wall with a straight-edged product makes things a lot easier to do. I mean, my architect presented plans that had bumps here, bumps here and where, if you remember the, the land at all, the land dives down quite a bit. And so what we're trying to do is make this actually energy efficient by building it into that hill. So, any jogs would lessen the ability to do that and would also have issues with snow and water and everything else. So that's kind of why we did a straight edge.
You guys made that point pretty well last time and I, I think from a business standpoint, I recognize that. I think it makes a lot of sense. The argument that this would be a hardship for you if you were unable to get the waiver, I think, I'm convinced. Are there other comments by other members of the board? Desiree?
The comment that I made, I was not one of the ones that cared about symmetry. I liked it more when it was just from one side because now you've got the conversation of like, what's the entrance? Is it the right or the left? We don't have hard regulations that like, can pin us down to say, "You have to do this, you have to do this." It's like outside of the area where, where it applies. The only comment that I had made originally was understanding that, you know, going in and out this way didn't work was what if you did something with the parapet and started bringing it up or down? Or if you took the material and rotated it like 90 degrees and ran it the other direction so you can kind of make planes, thick planes on it, like visual planes? But that said, it was a suggestion and, and I don't think that that would work in conjunction with this. It would make it look like a castle and that wasn't what you're going for. So, you know, it, I'd like it to be more interesting, but I understand the industrial approach for it and the other buildings there are, you know, kind of similar. It's not, it's a mix of buildings in that area. So, that's, that's my thought on it.
And this is a bit north of the Nashua Court Building, but it's essentially positioned the same on the other edge of the road and kind of down a little bit and fairly square.
But it's broken up quite, it's broken up quite a bit in size, but I, I won't argue with you and it is far away from there.
Yeah, this is quite a bit north from there. But anyway, other comments or questions? If there are none, there is a motion and a second to grant the waiver. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to grant the waiver. Now, I do want to capture the concept of dealing with mechanicals on your roof if you have any. Do you plan to have air conditioning or any of that kind of stuff up on your roof? Have you got it configured in a place that's already going to be obscured or do you need us to have a condition that says, "Screen it"?
It will be obscured. The building is so huge that-
Turn on the microphone right in front of you.
The building is so huge-
Touch, touch the power button on that microphone.
If we, there it is.
There you go.
The building is so large that if we put our, if we put our units in a central position, put some screening around it, no one will ever see them.
Okay, perfect. That's what I'd want to see. Based on adding the tower and some ideas that you want to change the landscape plan to feature the tower or not obscure it, does that require a change in the, what's been submitted or that just the staff deal with it?
There's already a condition regarding the landscape design. Let me find it here. The verify the applicable landscape buffering requirements are met accordingly and shown in plan and labeled or request really from the planning board. So we are comfortable with that condition covering, we can make sure that's addressed.
Okay. And I would imagine that somewhere in our records, we've got the recommendation from the Conservation Commission- the Conservation Commission that the landscaping plan not have any non-native species and no hay and all of the various things that they, low impact, no nitrogen fertilizer, all of that. You guys heard all of that?
We certainly have heard all that, and we don't have any objections to the staff recommendations for the conditions.
Are there other comments or questions by members of the board? And then we have to open it up for public hearing here in a bit.
Yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, for asking redundant questions because I wasn't here at the last hearing on this. But I did have some comments noticing the plans that were submitted seemed to have a lot of light spill over onto Route 3 and the neighbor, and I wonder if that was addressed in the approval that was given or the suggestions for approval that were given.
Certainly wasn't a part of the discussion. I don't have the plans from last time in front of me.
Thirteen, thirteen B.
Thirteen B?
Yep.
As the...
Thirteen B is the condition, adding the outline of specifications and compliance of Section 1105.3, which is the outdoor lighting section.
Yeah, we did touch on that briefly, I think, at the last meeting. I think Alister may have mentioned that we had some light spill over, and we are aware of that. We have modified on the lighting plan to address that, but we didn't make a resubmission to the board yet on all of those items, what we wanted to pull. We're waiting on some feedback from the Department of Transportation to address one of the conditions, and what we're looking to do is really make a, hopefully, a final submission that just addresses all the comments, because everything seemed quite reasonable.
So it's on your checklist, Tim. That's basically what I wanted to be sure of. And the DOT driveway permit that has to be given here?
No.
Right? No?
No, because they're not cutting into the highway. They're coming up, they're coming off Eric Street.
It goes into just into the road. Okay.
Other comments?
The only other comment I had was on sidewalk. I was disappointed that the board granted relief on that, and so I'll say no more.
Desiree?
On your floor plans, since you added the second tower?
Yes.
You have a future 4,000 square foot office space. Is that going to be a separate tenant? If so, what are you thinking for parking?
It's not a separate tenant. They may expand into that, or they may not, depending on how they, how much office space they actually need.
And if they expand and it'll come back before, at least the parking would be back up for...
I believe that it's designed to have sufficient parking to handle that additional office space. If not, then yes, it would come back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have, and I think that was one of the discussions last meeting too, was the amount of parking that we have. You know, one of the board members, and I'm sorry I can't recall who raised the question, but asked the reason for that amount of parking. And as Mr. Smith stated, you know, my response was, being the New England headquarters, there's likely to be, you know, meetings and conferences and so on that take place there, so we want to make sure that we can accommodate that. But from a parking calculation standpoint, we're definitely going to be fine accommodating that additional space.
If you recall, this is classified as self-storage, and the self-storage parking requirement is very low because it's not really intended to be long-term parking for people there.
Yeah, I was shocked the last time we had one of these, how low it was, but it's something like five spaces for an entire huge facility, or something really low like that, point something for. And they've obviously got a whole lot more than that. I think I was the one that asked you why you had so much. I thought it was more than you needed. But if the calculation supports it and the office space, then they would not have to come back for the board if they decided to use that space unless they made some change to the site plan as a part of doing that. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I accordingly would make a motion...
Well, hang on, let's do a public hearing first.
Oh, sorry, a public hearing, yes.
Any member of the public or butters, citizens wish to weigh in and offer the board anything to consider? You have the portable microphone to get that back where Chris can grab it.
Chris, four, do I got to sign in?
You do have to sign in.
Yeah. Yeah. Chris, 403DW Highway, just had one question, because I missed all this.
Ross, Ross, his last name.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, are any of those boxes going to be outside or are they 100% indoors?
I think they've expressed the intention that they're all 100% indoors.
Okay, so I'll need it, thank you.
Is that correct, Chad?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. And with that...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant approval of conditional approval on this project based on the memos of September 28th, 2017, and probably also relevant to refer to the other memo, which was August 30th, 2017. The 28th, you've incorporated everything. Right, okay, so according to the note of 28th, September 28th, 2017, said it meant by Mr. Thompson, and all the conditions in that have to be complied with.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
Paul.
Paul got it. Paul has a second. Tim, does the motion and second and the conditions set forth by the staff sufficiently capture the new architectural designs in that they're linked to the waiver?
Yes.
Okay. Then I don't have any other comments or questions about this. Does anyone else have any discussion, comments, or questions on the motion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero for conditional final approval.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much indeed. Good luck with the project.
Quick question. Are you retaining the Continental Boulevard site?
I'm sorry, are you going to keep your MyBox space on Continental Boulevard?
Continental?
It'll be in Continental for just a little while.
So you're going to migrate it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Item four on the agenda. William Stock is the applicant and Land of Goshen LLC is the owner. Continued review for consideration of final approval of a subdivision plan for a 12-lot cluster subdivision. The parcel is located at 6 Watkins Road in the R1 Residential in Oxford Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 4, CBOT 449. The item is continued from the June 20th, July 18th, August 15th, and September 5th planning board meetings. And this, as I mentioned earlier, is the one where the applicant has requested a continuance to our November 7th meeting as a result of some delays in getting through the ZBA and that this continuance is supported by staff. Is that correct, Tim? Anything else to add to it? What's the will of the board? Lynn?
I move we continue this at the request of the applicant to our November 7th meeting, same time, same place, with no further notice to a butters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Desiree. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to continue. Item four. Item five on our agenda is SRS Petroleum Services LLC is the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a proposed 694 square foot office space addition, along with the installation of two above-ground fuel storage tanks and associated site improvements. The parcel is located at 6 Wright Avenue in the I-1 Industrial and C-1 Limited Commercial and Oxford Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4D Lot 3, 4D 3 Lot 91. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before you hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is, in essence, it's a relatively straightforward project, construction of a 694 square foot office addition and the installation of two 3,000 gallon above-ground fuel tanks. There are a number of items that Robert has raised in his review memo, and we understand there are concerns from some of the butters that will probably be discussed here tonight. Additionally, in some review that Robert has done prior, or post-publishing of this memo at the end of last week, has led him to determine that the containment structure and tanks are actually considered structures, and they're currently shown to be within the front setback. So either relief from the zoning board will be needed to be encroaching within that setback, or the site will need to be revised such that those are located outside of the front setback. That's something that, in looking at this a little bit further, Robert made the determination, officially notified the applicant of that earlier today. So that's one of the other items. So ultimately, we recommend that the board, if you're comfortable and the applicant is comfortable, move forward with acceptance of the application, start the 65-day clock if that's something the applicant is willing to do. But otherwise, our recommendation would be to continue the application to allow for the applicant to address the concerns raised by staff and likely to be raised by the board and the butters here tonight.
Thank you, Tim. With that, please introduce yourself if you've already signed in, and then tell us about the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Garrett Picorillo, civil engineer with MHF Design Consultants out of Salem, New Hampshire. I am here today representing the property owner, SRS Petroleum Services, for proposed site improvements to their property located at 6 Wright Avenue. I am accompanied by Jeff LaCory to my left. Jeff is the region manager for the owners of SRS Petroleum Services. The property is located, is identified by the town as Map 4D 3 Lot 91. I have an aerial image here just for reference for the location of the site for the board. The site is outlined here in the dark black line. It's located adjacent to the corner of Daniel Webster Highway and Wright Avenue. The site is located within the Industrial 1 District with a portion of the site located in the Commercial 1 District. I will show that on a plan later on in the presentation, where that boundary actually is on the site. The site is mostly abutted by other industrial uses. Wright Avenue is basically all industrial uses at the moment. There are some retail uses along Daniel Webster Highway, which abut the site, and to the south in here across the street, it's actually in a zoned residential area, which is undeveloped and just a large open lot at the moment.
That's the way MCA is loaded, isn't it?
Correct. Yeah.
As you can see, the Merrimack River is located in the vicinity of the site. It's approximately 1,000 feet or so to the east of the project site, and Ocho Pond is here is approximately 700 feet, I believe, to the south of the project site. I would like to make note that we were in front of the Conservation Commission last night. They, it's my understanding that their comments were very minor. I'm not sure if those have been provided to the board yet, but as far as my understanding goes from the meeting, their concerns were mainly surrounding not using certain types of fertilizer that could introduce phosphates into the adjacent streams and waterways, along with not using any hay on the site or for erosion control measures. They'd like to see straw. So to us, those are very minor, and we have no objections to making those changes and plan to make those changes. I'll now explain what we are proposing.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't have that email from the Conservation Commission, I do.
No, I have it here. They also mentioned that the spill safety features of your above-ground storage tank is a containment dike surrounding the tank and fuel dispensing pump. A spigot is planned to be installed in the south wall of the dike to occasionally drain any water collected within, and they recommend some type of oil-water separator or similar device to treat the fluid prior to draining it into the ground. Then they suggest, their next suggestion is, while the building changes outlined in the project are minimal, the stormwater flow of the site is concerning. Currently, this site has no drainage or treatment systems. All stormwater sheet flows across the yard to the northeast into an existing wetland or to the south onto Wright Avenue and down the road. The northeast flow is of particular concern as it has a high flow rate and very steep runoff. The flow pattern has caused visible erosion, and if left unchanged, will continue washing solids into the wetlands. So we're going to talk a little bit about that, because I think that was already on the planning board's radar as well to talk about drainage. I think the oil-water separator thing is probably a minor comment, that dealing with the overall site drainage is probably a little more than minor.
Yes, we could provide an oil-water separator if that is what the commission would like or the board would like to see. I mean, currently, there is a, right here, shown on the plan, is an existing truck and construction vehicle washing pad, which does have an oil-water separator. I could show it in more detail on another plan, but it's actually shown here. That does tie into the municipal sewer system, as there's no existing closed drainage system along Wright Avenue or in the vicinity of the site. That was that they were approved to tie into the sewer system, as there was really no other option. So if we were to put in another oil-water separator, we would have to tie into the municipal sewer system as well. As far as the overall drainage of the site goes, our proposal here does not really modify any existing drainage patterns on the site. It is true that everything currently just sheet flows or overland flows to the northeast as you just stated. That is correct. But basically, we were proposing to just keep that drainage pattern the same as it is today. It would be, it would be quite a challenge to provide certain levels of treatment depending on what, you know, what is asked of us due to the fact that there's no system to tie into. And we would probably be forced to outlet pretty deep into this northeast corner, which could be done if need be. But our approach was that we really weren't modifying any existing drainage patterns. We aren't adding any impervious area to the site. In fact, we are actually decreasing it slightly by about 26 square feet, which I can get into. I know I haven't fully explained the project yet, because we got into this drainage discussion, but that was our approach, not decreasing impervious area and just maintaining existing drainage patterns.
So, all right, let's set aside the drainage and let you do the presentation of the general project. I kind of read ahead a little bit and got an understanding of the details of what you were changing, but for the benefit of anybody else at home or members of the board who want to have kind of the more basic presentation, let's just start from the beginning and then we'll get to the drainage and groundwater here in a bit.
Okay, thank you. The proposed site improvements for the site consist of taking an existing modular office trailer, which is, part of it is under this addition shown here, and part of it kind of butts out on the end there. And I'm sorry, I can show that on an existing conditions plan in a second, but the plan would be to remove that existing modular office trailer. It's just a temporary structure. It's not sitting on a foundation or anything like that. So it is attached to the back of the building in here, but we would be removing that completely, leaving this existing permanent structure here, which is 5,057 square feet. It's an office slash warehouse building. That would remain, and we would be putting on a permanent addition here in the southwest corner of the building. It's a 694 square foot addition. It's slightly smaller than the existing modular office trailer. That trailer is only, is 720 square feet, so it's 26 square feet less than what is there today. Besides that, the, what we are providing, some improved parking on-site in accordance with the town regulations to meet, you know, the parking count requirements. And additionally, we would be constructing a concrete sidewalk right here along the front of the building, the main reason being that we would be providing an ADA accessible parking space at the front of the building, which would be required. In order to do that, based on the grades between the entry to the building and the pavement, we would have to put a raised sidewalk there with an accessible ramp here. The final improvement that we are proposing, which we touched on briefly, is the installation of this above-ground storage tank here. It's a 6,000 gallon diesel tank split into two 3,000 gallon compartments. And if the board has any technical questions related to this, we do have the plans. This was approved by New Hampshire DES in August of this year. The plans were prepared by Will Cox and Barton. We have those plans here and can provide hard copies to the board if they would like. And if you have any technical questions, Jeff LaCory here could answer those, as he's a little more knowledgeable in the technical aspects of that. So we are proposing to tell you, if you actually see the above-ground... So we are proposing to tell you, if you actually see the above-ground tank as the inner rectangle here, and then outside, the little, it's a little bit darker. That is the containment dike that we spoke about briefly early in the presentation. As discussed, we, when we initially designed this and interpreted the zoning regulations, we did not believe that that above-ground tank was considered a structure. We have since learned that we were incorrect on that. We actually found that out today. So I had discussions with Robert Price throughout the day today, and I circled back with our client here, and they have agreed to relocate the tank, tank and the pad, just this whole structure here. They've agreed to shift it backwards so that the above-ground tank will be outside of the required fifty-foot setback from the front lot line. So we will not, we would not like to pursue a variance from the ZBA for this. We'd rather just move it, relocate it, and move on with it. So that will be part of our revisions in the coming weeks. It would be sliding that back, and we would have to reorient some of the parking a little bit. As, you know, we showed two parking spaces here. We'll have to relocate those, but we'll have no problem doing that as there's plenty of space out there to do so. So.
Tim, did Robert have a chance to forward the public works comments to you today?
Oh, I did not.
Okay. I know they came very late in the afternoon. He may have already left for the day.
Okay.
But just, I wanted to go through these and highlight, we do now have, the town engineer finally had a chance to go through and provide some comments, just to highlight some of the ones that I think are of note for the planning board. One says, "The entrance shall be reduced to provide entrance and egress from the property. The extra pavement not needed for driveway entrances should be removed. See section seven oh three for parking standards, including widths, lengths, and aisle provisions. Also, there should be no parking on the property that will allow traffic to back onto Wright The adequacy of the off-street parking, loading, and safety for street, again, this is another one that mentions no parking backing onto Wright Ave. Per section seven oh five D thirteen, stormwater drainage plan shall be provided, showing the existing and proposed method of handling stormwater. Permanent stormwater drainage features shall be installed as necessary. Provide stormwater management plan to ensure roadway will not be overtopped or damaged during a design storm of a fifty-year frequency. Wetlands not shown on the plan. Driveway width should not exceed thirty-six feet plus the driveway flare, minimum radius of twenty-five feet. Driveway entrances shall be curved from the edge of the highway, at least to the end of the radio at the driveway throat. And sheet seven, under drains or outfalls have not been shown on the plans. Curved lines have not been shown on the plan or has a graded swell location. Then last, we was adding a note on the plans that any work provided in the right-of-way requires a right-of-way permit from the Highway Division.
Thank you, Tim, for reviewing those, and I have a feeling there's going to be quite a few things that we're going to chew on and change, and you're going to move your pumps and some things, so that'll be something you guys can have a chance to digest between meetings. You don't have to answer.
I'll make sure Robert gets those off to tomorrow.
Thank you.
Today. So for my benefit, start from the beginning. What business are you in? What's going on in the site today? How's that building being used, and what's going to be different in the future? Because I missed, I mean, I know that SRS Petroleum suggests you're in the petroleum business, but what, what does that mean? What are you doing?
I'm Jeff LaCory. I'm Vice President of SRS Petroleum. SRS is a construction company. Our principal form of work is petroleum construction. We install typical gas stations you might see around town in our community, as well as we do a lot of industrial and federal work. We do work for the T and DOTs throughout New England. Company is, headquarters is in Bridgewater, our main hub, which is in the town of Merrimack, which is the operation that I run. That facility, we manage just over thirty-two people that work throughout New England. That facility is primarily used as a staging area for all of our construction equipment.
When you say that facility, you mean this facility?
This facility, excuse me, yes, Wright Avenue. So we have excavation equipment, we have bobcats, we have tractors, all forms of construction equipment that we utilize for our work, that we store on-site.
So this fuel is for your own use? You're not?
That's correct.
Okay, the building itself now, is that office space? Is it warehouse space? What's in that? Is it just indoor storage?
I would suggest probably about seventy-five percent of that, that area is storage area. The garages, we use to store some of our vehicles. We also have tools and where, and particular equipment for our construction sites that we store on-site. The front side of the building is actually two-tiered. There's two levels. There's a lower level, which is an entrance level. It has probably about four hundred, four hundred and fifty square feet of office space. The upstairs, the second story, has about the same amount of space, five to six hundred square feet of office, which is primarily where we house myself and some of the other project engineers that work for the company. The addition that we're proposing is additional office space that we're looking to expand to create more area for some of our project management and engineering staff, so.
Is the mobile thing that's going away office space now?
It's currently nothing. We don't utilize it at all. It's, it was, we kind of inherited it, and we purchased the property.
How long ago did you purchase it?
It was probably, what, two thousand twelve, I believe?
Okay.
We bought it from the White Company, the construction company.
When you bought it, did it, was the buildings and the configuration all basically what's there today?
Currently, we've not modified anything. The only thing that we've added to the property since, since we got here was the oil-water separator, the wash, the wash pad.
Okay. Do you know if there's been prior planning board approval for the site or site plan review for all of the things that are there today? Has it been engineered before?
I do not know.
I would have to look into that as well.
So it probably hasn't been?
There is a plan, I don't know how long ago it was for RH White, the former construction company that occupied the site. I have not had a chance to compare that to anything regarding this particular application.
See what's actually out there.
Correct.
Okay. Tell me on your plan that you have up here now, you've got some green areas, and then the building is in gold, and then there's kind of, I don't know what that gray-brown, certainly there's gray that's pavement, and then there's some other brownish color. What do those colors mean?
Sorry, go ahead. The brownish area, excuse me, I'm very colorblind, so, and I made this. This area is all gravel. This is all gravel today. This is all pavement. This is the existing edge of pavement line here. And the green is grass or woodland area. There's actually a tree line. It almost follows the zoning district boundary line here, the trees being to the west of that. So it's grass, gravel, and pavement.
So where the gravel, at the top of your page, to the north, where the gravel and the grass meet each other, is that some kind of a water course, or is that, what's that dividing line between the gravel and the?
It's, yeah, it's basically an embankment. It kind of drops off pretty steeply at that boundary between the two ground covers there. It does drop off into, it's a potential wetland, as we were showing here. We.
What does potential mean?
Potential means that when we surveyed the site, it visually appeared that it was a wetland. We didn't get it delineated by a wetland scientist at the time because we didn't see that as being necessary, considering we weren't modifying any drainage pattern, and we weren't proposing any site improvements anywhere near that. I mean, we're over a hundred feet away from that wetland.
So is your yard kind of a staging yard, or do you repair equipment and do any kind of maintenance on your equipment in the yard or in the building or anything?
We do maintenance inside the building, on the far bay, on the very, on the north side of the property.
Okay. In terms of maintenance on the equipment, are you doing like oil changes or things that are going to produce waste oil or?
We do.
Any of those kinds of things? How are those handled now?
We have currently a waste oil burner that was part of the facility that we use. So any of the motor oils and such that we're using are being stored in a double-wall tank inside the building, and they're being utilized as heat, to heat the actual working space within that warehouse area.
You know, I don't know if it's necessarily part of this approval or this consideration, although maybe it is, but typically, when we see a facility that's configured that way, one of the things we're particularly interested in is making sure that there are not floor drains, or if there are floor drains, there's some oil-water separation in the floor drains to make sure if you're changing oil on something and you get a spill, that it isn't going into the ground. Do you have, do you know if you have floor drains in the building?
There are no floor drains in the building.
Okay, good. Any other painting or any other chemicals or hazards going on inside the building?
No.
Is there any, I'm sure, probably don't know because it probably was that way when you bought it, but the really odd edge of pavement configuration where it juts out here and bolts back there, is it, is it just that it's degraded over time into a funny shape, or did somebody have some reason to lay it out that way?
My suggestion from an environmental standpoint is, I know that, I think at one point, they had fuel tanks on that site, underground fuel tanks. So I think a lot of it may have had to do with probably preparing the property for sale. They removed the underground fueling system, which created that jagged edge that you see on the eastern side of the property.
Okay.
Which demarked by the light gray paving and the gravelly material on the.
Are you confident there's no underground fuel tanks there now?
We haven't researched that, but we would assume that they would have been, that would have been removed.
A little careful. A little careful with that. We may want to have to understand that pretty clearly.
We could verify that as well.
I'm sure you guys want to know too.
Yeah.
When you guys bought it from RH White, was there any sort of due diligence that looked into environmental concerns or the history of the property?
I wasn't part of that transaction, so I couldn't speak to it. I would have to ask the owner, Mr. Bissinat.
You know, it seems to be a fairly kind of common concept when you're buying an industrial site of this kind to just make sure you're, the previous guy didn't leave you with a headache in that regard. And even if there's no hazardous waste kind of headaches or buried fuel tanks, I think you do have a headache with your drainage situation. Sort of talk about that a little bit. Before I switch gears over to talking about drainage and wetlands and all that, does any member of the board have other questions about the general configuration of the site and what the applicant does with their site and what they're proposing to do with it? All right, so talk to me about, I understand that you, your view is that we're not making that much of a modification, we're actually reducing the impervious surface, so we ought to be able to leave the drainage the way that it is. I'm not sure I'm convinced why we should buy into that approach and not want to see the drainage problem fixed because of some of the warnings that we're getting from our Conservation Commission about the flow, about the nearby wetlands, the nearby pond, the nature of the work that you do on the site, and especially if the site's never been engineered before to consider or properly deal with its drainage. What exists there may have existed before this proposal, but it isn't natural if it was created by the RH White development when they were there. So talk a little bit more about that. What would it take to get some consideration of runoff and drainage and get in control of the situation that's there?
My, my first approach would be probably to, I would like to avoid putting in a closed drainage system if at all possible. You'd obvious, obvious maintenance issues and much, you know, much more pricey construction there. I would, I would lean towards putting some sort of treatment swell or a bioretention area, some sort of above-ground basin.
Would you put it in the area, you just hit the laser? Because that's the middle of the gravel area now, that's kind of the yard, isn't it?
I would have, I would have to discuss with the owner where they would be okay with putting that and find a place for it. That would be, I guess, our struggle there is I wouldn't want to hinder their daily operations. And if they came to that, and maybe we do have to install something underground, then so be it if that's the only option to satisfy everyone. But like I said, my first approach would be most likely some sort of treatment swell along, you know, along the edge here and however long it has to be, to be in accordance with New Hampshire DES regulations and obviously, you know, meet their criteria.
How many acres is your whole site?
About three. Yeah, it's about three acres.
All right. So you get about a hundredth thousand square feet before you do alteration of terrain permits? So you're probably okay with?
Twenty thousand square feet is the disturbance level for the local stormwater permit.
So virtually anything that you had to do for drainage is going to bring you into that bit as well, but that's probably a good thing.
Most likely, yes. We're slightly under that, but like you said, with the addition of the drainage areas, we would probably be above that.
Given the comments that we have from Public Works and I think the concerns I'm hearing from the board, if this were to move forward with a drainage analysis, we would need to have this submitted to CLD Fossett O'Neill for an estimate for escrow, so that we would have appropriate funds for a peer review on this. Because at this point, given there was no drainage report submitted with the initial application, we did not involve CLD in this at this stage.
What is, what's the sense of the board in terms of drainage? I'm pretty much in favor of seeing some drainage improvements, not just calculations, but improvements done based on what's gone on here in the past. And I think that frankly, it'll help you guys out in terms of you having a good facility that you can use well and operate well to not have this back part of the property be kind of a mess with erosion and all of that.
The other thing I think that I'd ask the applicant to consider, the board really has, can, the board could accept the application as complete because I think there is enough information here for the board to move forward with a complete this determination. The question I have is, do you want them to do that and start the sixty-five day clock? Or would you rather that a continuance include both the acceptance and the public hearing so that we don't start that clock until we get to another meeting?
That would give you a chance to address some of these things without being on necessarily a short timeframe. Now, the timeframe stays within your control because even if we're on the sixty-five day clock, if you ask for a continuance and waive the sixty-five day deadline, then we can grant you a continuance and we can offer some more time. So really, you have some options either way timewise, but it's your, it's your decision, your discretion to.
We would opt to go for the continuance here tonight.
Okay, so, well, there would be a continuance either way, it's just whether we accept it and then continue it? Or continue it before we accept it as complete?
If the clock started tonight, we would be okay with that.
So you want to accept it as complete and then continue it?
Yes.
If that's the will of the board?
That also gives the board then the opportunity to open the public hearing as well.
Yeah, and I think that that makes some sense, since I assume that Chris is here to talk about it. Any other comments or questions? What's the will of the board with respect to determining the application complete?
Also move.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Jim.
Second by Alastair, to determine the applications complete. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to determine the applications complete. Is the, does the board wish to have any further discussion with the applicant at this point about the proposal, or do you want to do a public hearing and hear some input, or?
I'd go for the public hearing and then keep the door open for further comment.
Yeah, we're not closing the door yet. Okay, so let's have a public hearing. Any other interested citizen wish to weigh in and offer the board anything to consider?
Mr. Ross, four oh three Daniel Webster Highway. I want to first just say that I support everything they're doing. I'm all about development. I'm all about improving a business and building a business, so I support everything he's doing. We have a few concerns. We've been dealing with a lot of problems from this site for four years. I've reached out to these guys about a dozen times. I've gotten nowhere with these guys with these problems, and I am very happy to be here today because I know they're going to get taken care of. I know what I went through when I developed my site. We had gone through a number of things, and it was, it was an uphill battle. So I feel for them, but there's some things that this site absolutely needs to be addressed. We spent a lot of time getting that development in the back there approved, and we had, at one point, gone to the fire department and received comments from those guys as to what they wanted. And one of those things that they wanted was they wanted us to put an access road down to Wright Avenue. So they got rid of that wall, and which, if you recall, Nancy Larson was against that, and we put in the ramp and we put in that roadway, and we relocated our parking down there in addition to that because that was number two. They didn't want parking spaces against the building. So we relocated all that stuff down there, but when we tried to do that, we couldn't because we had a severe problem with that site's drainage. I want to first correct these guys on their drainage. It does not go to the back of the property. This, all this site here does not flow into the back of the property like explained last night and tonight, okay? All this water sheets in this direction here at me. And what happens is, I'm going to show you these pictures. Nelson, can you pass this?
Those the same ones, Chris, that you had given? Those the same ones, Chris, that you had given?
No. Put together packets so that it's nice to me.
Okay, so we've got some different packages.
These pictures show you a rainstorm, a typical rainstorm, okay? I took my truck down there, they were all taken the same day. It was the beginning of winter, a little bit of snow on the ground, but it was raining that day. And what happened is, all this water sheets down this site here, right here, and this is my access road now, but it wasn't like that. And what happens is, the water comes onto my site and it goes down that access road and then turns into a pond in the center of my access road just below the ramp, okay? So that it's impassable, you can't get anything down there. There's a tractor trailer parked on the roadway to show you guys how much length that water collects in one rainstorm, okay? In one rainstorm. So that's a problem that I, I absolutely need to address because what happened was we ended up having to dump $100,000 into building that roadway. We had to put, we had to bring some gravel in, we had to, you know, put a good base on, and we paved it thinking that this is going to solve our problem. We added a culvert in between our properties, on our property line, so that perhaps his water would go into the culvert and go into the wetlands. But what was happening was the water is, there's so much water during a rainstorm, it's so strong that it was pushing those rocks down the culvert into the wetlands. So I got to send my maintenance guy down there periodically to collect the rocks, put them in a wheelbarrow, and put them back in place. That's getting old. And then additionally, the last page, the last page, actually, this one right here, that's to show you the flooding that happens on the site, okay? This two-page packet shows you my, my access road built, paved with the culvert. And if you take a look closely, you'll see some, some light sand on the pavement. That's to show you that it's still, it's, it's filling the culvert, it's pushing the rocks down the culvert, and it's overflowing onto my pavement. So I've got this water, the second page is, is better detail, I've got this water washing over the culvert, onto the pavement, down my driveway, and going into the pond. My concern is, is that they're construction vehicles, they're dump trucks, they're excavators, it's not like a typical car, they leak diesel fuel, they leak hydraulic fluid, they, they leak oil, and that stuff is coming onto my site. I don't want it on my site anymore. I don't want his water on my site, I don't want his chemicals on my site. I want these guys to do what I did and design some sort of drainage. We did underground drainage, if you recall. It was costly, I didn't want to do it, but we had to do it. And I feel that they should contain their water on their site. Lastly, I'd like to ask that they put back the, the buffer fence that, that R.H. White had. R.H. White was in the construction. He had cones, he had pallets, he had, you know, barrels, he had, he had junk. And what he had in the past was, there was a chain-linked fence that ran about eight feet, maybe 10 feet off the edge of this cliff. And that chain-linked fence kept all that crap contained on his site. I, I understand what these guys did. They moved in, they had a lot of equipment. What they did was they, they basically smoothed out that entire dirt gravel area, got rid of this burn that used to be here, created the drainage problem that I now have, got rid of the fence, put everything up against the, the edge of the cliff so they can maximize this base. I get it. The problem that I'm having is, is that in addition to the water problem, that this stuff is falling over the edge. I've, I've gone down there, when they're closed, I've carried pallets up, I've carried a plastic barrel, you know, some two-by-fours miscellaneous trash. It finds its way down in there, okay? This is, in my opinion, this is wetland. I would like for them to get an engineer and have this delineated so that we know where that wetland mark is. And the second reason why I want that done is because, I'm sorry to bring this up, but I want the mess that has been created in this, what I feel is a wetland, cleaned up. There was some dumping going on, it looks awful. I've asked them to stop, they didn't stop. I've got pictures right here, I'm going to hold up on passing them out because I don't, I don't want to throw them under the bus, but I'm asking, on, on the first occasion they did it, I went up there, I asked the guy, he gave me a yeah, yeah, yeah. The second time they did it, I got pretty much an F-U. The third time, I tried to call them, no, no callback. Fourth time, no callback. Now there's probably four different examples in these packets of dumping. I, I want that cleaned up. It doesn't belong in there. If I did that on my site, I know full well that this board and community development would be at my doorstep. So those are, those are our concerns. I've been asking this periodically for, I believe, four years now.
I appreciate all the concerns about the environment. Stick to describing what's there. How many times you've asked them and talked to them really isn't necessarily material to what we're looking at.
Okay.
But tell me about, tell me about what you're seeing in the dumping. I don't, I want to hear all of that, but the back and forth conversations and who answered whose calls really doesn't do anything for us.
I spent three days when I bought that property back in 2003 pulling tires, a lawnmower, trash out of that, that wetlands pond. And I, I do keep an eye on it, I keep it clean. I have my maintenance guy walk my site, including that wetlands area, and we go out there, I don't care if the mud's up to our knees, we pull out whatever's in there, you know? And I'm, I'm tired of going over there and picking up stuff. I'm tired of getting an F-U from the employees. I, I just, I want, I want this stuff cleaned up and I want to get this site corrected so that we don't have to spend more money fixing. I just dumped a hundred grand on that access road. That water's just going to keep washing out my culvert and then it washes out the gravel underneath the pavement, and then the pavement cracks, and then my, my access road is totaled. It takes time, but I don't want to have to do it. All right?
Yep, I understand. The reason that I'm setting these up here is I want you guys to have a copy of these so that when at the appropriate time, whether it's tonight or at whatever point in the future, you guys have a fair shot at, you know, having a response to all these things. You don't obviously have them and I can't expect you to absorb them and be ready to make a response really right away, but these, I want you guys to have them. If, I know that the room is empty, but I go through the formality. Is there any other butter?
Just for informational purposes, the majority of those are actually in the packet that we have.
Yeah, there's some duplica- there's a lot of duplication.
There may well be. You may be familiar with them anyway. If there's no other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in, we'll close the public hearing. I'll offer you the opportunity, if you choose to, to respond to anything that was offered in the public hearing, and then we'll do some more questions and answers with the board and figure out where we go as the next step.
I think at this time, we, we would just like to leave it open to the board for any further questions or comments.
Okay. So I am interested in the photographs that we see, and in a couple of them in this package, I want to know more about what's going on in the photograph. This one in particular, and I know that they're not numbered or anything, and I'll sort of show the board which one I'm looking at. This, this is a pallet kind of in the foreground here, and I guess that's your building in the background, is that correct?
Yes.
What's this stuff? Is this fill material that's been brought in? It doesn't look like it's native material. Is it just a snow pile?
Is it dirty snow? I don't know, I, it's hard to say.
Take a look, take, take all the package and take a look at that one and let me know what that is.
It's snow.
Could well be.
I don't know what time, what time of season this was. It, it looks like it could be snow, but I'm not sure.
If it's snow, then certainly I don't have any necessarily objections to there being snow. If it's something else, if there's any non-native fill material that's being brought in here as a part of the construction work, or you're bringing stumps or stuff on site, tell me that, or tell me that you're not doing that.
We typically, we don't do that. I mean, the, the work that we do is environmental work. All the materials that we're using on sites are, are being hauled off to various recycling facilities and such. So there would be, there would be no reason that we would be importing any material on site. I know the only time, we, we did import some materials when we installed the, the wash separator last, the beginning of this year, but that was about the extent of it, and those were just gravels and material like that.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, I, now that it's pointed out to me that it's probably snow, that is what it looks like, appears to be. Any other comments or questions about things that have been said? What are the, the board members have comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just say that what has been brought to our attention here does need some serious consideration by the applicant. And I think the applicant's nodding his head yes and agreeing, and I just want to emphasize that from the board's point of view, I think the butter has raised some serious concerns. Thank you.
I think for my own part, I support the idea that we've talked about before with getting the drainage situation dealt with, and then that's going to require some peer review for that so that we can get some of that problem solved. One of the things that I'm, that is on my mind, and I don't know if the rest of the board would support the idea or not, but I'm, I'm interested in what I see in the photographs and the lay of the land, but I almost want, I, I think that I'm not getting the full picture and maybe it's, we ought to go do a site visit and have a look.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm totally with you. I think we need a site walk.
I think going to take a look at this ourselves so we see what's going on and which way the water goes will make a lot of difference in terms of what we can understand for some things. And then when we come back together before the, you know, here, you can describe based on things that we've seen with our own eyes and say when we saw this or when we saw that. Other than Alastair, what's the will of the board on a site visit? I see a lot of shaking heads, we don't need a vote, but it seems we've got enough sense to do that.
Do we need a motion?
If you're going to have an official site walk with a quorum of the board, you will need to have it publicly noticed like you would any other meeting.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we want. We'll have to pick a time and a date before we finish up here tonight to try to arrange that.
The other part of this is, I'm assuming that the board is going to request that a drainage analysis be done for the project.
Yep.
Yep.
So we will need to have at some point the, when we get to a revised plan submission, we'd need to submit that to our peer review consultant for an estimate for escrow. Given the timing of things and the fact we only have one November meeting, I would suggest that we probably want to have that peer review prior to this board reconsidering the application. So I would say that the date for continuance would likely be the December 5th meeting would be the appropriate.
And we could have had a site walk before that.
And you can do an S-, you can do a site walk at, at a period of time in between now and then.
I agree with your sense of the timing for getting first drainage work done and then get it submitted for peer review, that that can take a little while. What do you guys think in terms of how much time would you need to design the drainage for the site so that peer review could have a look at it?
It depends, I, I would have to review the regulations in more detail and maybe possibly have discussions with the town engineer to see what that is going to entail, but if that, if it, if it includes hiring a wetland scientist to delineate the wetlands...
Yes.
Then, then it would probably be closer to the one to two month.
So, instead of December, you want to aim for January?
No, I'm sorry, no, December would, would work.
The only, the only meeting in November is November 7th because of the second meeting would fall during Thanksgiving week. So that meeting on the 21st was not scheduled, so the meetings upcoming, we have November 7th, December 5th, and December 19th are the remaining meeting dates within this year.
December 5th would be an adequate amount of time.
Okay, so you, it, within that time, you've got to get your engineering done, and then the peer review takes a period of time. They have 10 days from the time that it's submitted with a proper payment for CLD to turn that around, correct? So you've got to be able to get that information so that CLD can have its review in time for their results to be distributed to us ahead of a meeting. So you're really talking probably closer to, you know, two, two and a half weeks before December 5th to have your stuff submitted, if that works for you.
That works for us.
The other thing to discuss, and I'll sort of leave this up to you, and to give us some guidance in terms of scheduling, when you would want us to come do a site walk. We generally do that on a Saturday morning, kind of eight or nine o'clock in the morning or something, get it out of the way, because otherwise daylight and after-hours and work hours just don't quite accommodate all of that. So with that in mind, is that something that you'd want to do closer to December 5th or closer to now or...
I would say it's, I can discuss it with the owner, but I would say, you know, within the next couple of weeks if that's possible, that would be fine. Saturdays, I live local, so it's not a big deal.
I think my preference would be to make sure we don't have snow on the ground, not that we would always have snow on December 5th, but let's, let's try to avoid that. You don't know what you're going to get by December 5th.
If the applicant could give us some potential dates on Saturday mornings in the next few weeks, we want to go out at least in terms of making sure we're tied for public notice. We probably would be looking at...
Twenty-one, twenty-eight.
Twenty-one or twenty-eight would be the earliest.
I would say either of those dates would be fine.
Do I have a consensus of the board so I can start preparing notice? Which one, 21 or 28?
Give me a second.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Saturday the 21st?
Yep.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a sense of all of the things that we want to accomplish between now and when we come back on December 5th?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other questions or information that you'd need? Have you requested any waivers that you need us to consider or at least give you some sense about?
There is one more item. I actually submitted a, a waiver request this afternoon.
What do you want a waiver for?
A waiver is for the subdivision regulation 7.05.D.19. It's a sidewalk requirement. It would require us to put sidewalk on a, on our, along the frontage of our site along Wright Avenue. We were submitting a waiver request due to the fact that there are no existing sidewalks along either Daniel Webster Highway or Wright Avenue. It's an industrial use. It would basically be a sidewalk to nowhere as it would not connect, connect to anything else.
Yeah, well, there are some on DW Highway because we made the, some of the recent developments up in that area, built some, but you don't, you don't have any frontage on DW Highway, so.
Correct.
You can either consider it now or you can hold off until December on that.
Yeah. I'll follow whatever lead the board.
Given, given there might be some significant redesign, I, I would suggest waiting to December.
Yep, okay. Generally speaking, I've been inclined to look favorably on that kind of a request on a site like this and this kind of a location, but we'll take a look at it in December and get a closer look at it once you've changed the lot configuration a little bit. I think the comment that Don had suggested about the driveway width was already on my mind. You got kind of, I don't know how many feet that is, that opening for the entrance, and we tend to want to see just a driveway and not kind of the whole front of the property basically accessing to the street. The dotted line that crosses to the right side of your property, what is that?
Yes, this line here?
Yeah.
That's the, the flood, 100-year flood elevation boundary. So it's to the east on this side of the line is the 100-year flood zone for, for the site.
Okay. And then your 500-year flood is many lots to the left of the page.
Correct.
Okay. Great place to put an oil tank. Any other comments or questions by members of the board? The applicant has got the information that they require, and what's before the board now is whether it wishes to continue to December 5th. Oh, actually, do we need a vote on the, on the site walk?
No, the consensus is fine, we'll notice it appropriately.
Okay, is there any other action other than continuing the board needs to take? What's the will of the board with respect to continuing to December 5?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue this project to the 20, December the 5th with no further notice to a butter, to be at seven o'clock in this room.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion? Second by Nelson Disco. Any further discussion? All in favor of continuing to December 5th, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That is seven zero zero to continue. Thank you for your presentation. I know that we had a lot of tough questions for you and there's going to be some design changes to it. I think that generally we're in favor of helping someone get to their project to comply with all the regulations that you need. We don't have kind of an instinctive dislike for any project, including this one, so don't take any of this stuff as being a, a negative influence on your business or your, your role here in town. That's all I can offer for that. With that... With that, thank you, if you don't need anything else from us. That's it for your agenda item, and that brings us to item six on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. We've already addressed the one that was in the packet. Is there any, anybody else have any other items of concern? Seeing none. That brings us to item seven, which is approval of the minutes of September 19, 2017. What's the will of the board?
I move we approve as printed.
Motion to approve as printed. Is there a second? Second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstain.
Two abstaining, so that is 5-0-2 with Desiree Falk and Kelsel Koenig abstaining. That concludes the business on our agenda, which means it is time for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second by Desiree. Any, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.